It is now seven PM. Welcome to the Monday, August eighteenth, 2025 Town Council Meeting. Our meeting this evening will be broadcast live on the Town of Double Oak YouTube channel. Once on the channel, please click on the live button. Out of respect for all those in attendance, please refrain from talking to other members of the audience during the meeting. Please silence all electronic devices while the Cook-Wilkinson Community Government Room. I would like to ask our Town Secretary Lynn Jones to please call the roll.
Mayor Johnson?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Willen?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Pro Tem Dietrich?
Here.
Mr. Gwartney?
Here.
Dr. Kay?
Here.
Ms. Robertson?
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Pro Tem Dietrich will now lead us in an invocation.
We gather today in service of our community, seeking wisdom, understanding, and unity. May our discussions be guided by integrity, our decisions rooted in justice, and our actions to reflect the well-being of those who we call Double Oak Home. Grant everyone in attendance today the ability to listen with open hearts, speak with respect and clarity, and to lead with courage and compassion. May our efforts today strengthen our own town and bring prosperity, peace, and opportunity to every resident. We ask for strength in times of challenge, patience, in moments of disagreement, and the vision to build a future that is bright for our beloved Town of Double Oak. In God's name, amen.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Willen will now lead us into pledges. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, eternal, just as for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Wanted to just give a little bit of a framework for the meeting tonight, so if, just to kind of get in front, in case there's some people that may have some questions on how things will run tonight. This evening, the Town Council will conduct two public hearings and consider related actions concerning property located at 250 Simmons Road. The first hearing will invite citizen input on request to subdivide and replat a fifteen-acre tract of land into five separate lots. Following this, the council will hear a presentation from Chris Loggernauer and vote on the subdivision request. The second public hearing will focus on a rezoning request for the same property. Citizens will have the opportunity to provide comments on a proposal to change the zoning from Ag One Agriculture District to Ranch Estates zoning for all lots except Lot Four, which would be Ag Two zoning. After the hearing, the council will again hear a presentation from Chris Loggernauer to deliberate and vote on the rezoning ordinance. The council will also review and discuss the proposed fiscal 2025 budget. This discussion will provide an overview of the draft budget, allow council members to ask questions, and begin the process of refining the plan for future adoption. No formal budget action will be taken tonight. To maintain a respect and productive meeting, the following rules of conduct will be enforced. Only one person may speak at a time, and individuals may do so only when recognized by the presiding officer. Remarks must remain on topic and specific to the agenda item under discussion, and all speakers are required to address the council directly, not the audience. Each speaker must begin by stating their full name and home address, then step close to the microphone — we had some issues last time with the mic, so if you can do that for us — and speak clearly so that both room and online broadcast capture their comments. Outbursts of profanity, personal attacks, or disruptive behavior will not be tolerated and will likely receive a warning from the chair. Likewise, all attendees must remain seated unless speaking at the lectern. Standing in the Cook-Wilkinson Room is not permitted under the fire code and safety protocols. Together, these procedures are designed to ensure that every citizen has the opportunity to be heard while keeping the Town Council meeting orderly, respectful, and efficient. And y'all did great the other night with how many sheets of paper there were that people signed up. I expect the same thing again, but I did need to mention that there. So there has been some questions about citizen comments and why and how the council. We are not allowed to have discourse with the citizens during citizen comments. Many of you that have been to town meetings before would know that. There's been times when it's — we haven't always followed the rules. Between the town attorney and town administrator, they're making sure that we do follow the rules as, and the guidance that we're supposed to do. So I'm going to move into citizen comments, non-agenda subjects. The next segment is intended for a citizen comment on any subject except those that appear on the agenda. From looking at the sign-up sheets tonight, it looks like y'all did awesome. I didn't see any crossover, so thank you. If there is, we'll correct it. Those citizens wishing to address an agenda item will be recognized at the appropriate time. That's our agenda item sign-up sheet that we'll call when we get to items thirteen and fifteen. Any citizen comments at this time will not receive any verbal council response, nor must the citizen expect any discourse with the mayor or other council member. This is a procedural rule not intended to convey a lack of interest or discourtesy, but rather to provide time for all citizens to speak and to move on to the new business of the council. As a reminder, all Town Council proceedings, including citizen comments, are recorded for record-keeping purposes. So did I get that right? All right, thank you. All right. First up on the agenda items this evening — whoops, the non-agenda items — is Mary Johnson. Please identify yourself and then speak closely into the mic.
My name is Mary Johnson, and I reside at 160 Forest Park Drive in Double Oak. I'd like to start with a few reminders from voices past and present. Thomas Jefferson once said, "No one is to disturb another in his speech by hissing, coughing, spitting, speaking, or whispering to another, et cetera." Albert Einstein said, "Let every man be respected as an individual and no man idolized." Mother Teresa reminded us, "Kind words can be short and easy to speak, but their echoes are truly endless." These words point to a very simple truth: Respect is the foundation of a healthy community. Respect means listening as much as speaking and remembering the golden rule: Do unto others as you have done, as you would have them done to you. In Double Oak, many of our leaders and teams, like the planning and zoning, the Town Council, Mayor, Double Oak Volunteer Fire Department, and other committees, serve as volunteers, giving their time and energy for the good of our town, often making personal sacrifices to do so. Disrespect, whether in person or online, only diminishes their efforts. So before you speak or post on social media, let's ask ourselves these three things. Can I contribute to the solution, or am I inflaming the problem? Would I say this the same way if a person were sitting in front of me? Does my tone reflect the standards I expect from others? When respect guides our actions, we create an environment where people feel safe to share ideas, work through items, and focus on solutions. That's how communities thrive. I also want to encourage everyone to get involved and find an opportunity to connect, co-create, and positively contribute to our community of Double Oak, such as ask the police department or the volunteer fire department what you can do to help. Support local nonprofits like the Double Oak Women's Club or the Jelly Bean Food for Kids. There's flyers and information in the lobby. Get involved in projects that impact the entire Town of Double Oak, like the Eden Ranch development on the southwest border, King's Road improvements, the drainage work. And if you feel called, consider serving on a town committee or in our local government. Volunteering is the heart of any community. As one unknown author said, "Volunteering is the ultimate exercise in democracy." You vote in elections once a year, but when you volunteer, you vote every day about the kind of community you want to live in. To the citizens of Double Oak, let's commit to respect, service, and community. I'd like to close with one final quote from Elizabeth Andrew. Volunteers do not necessarily have the time, they have the heart. Thank you.
Thank you. Pam Feldman?
My name is Pam Feldman. I live at 350 Oakview Drive. I'm speaking again tonight because we desperately need an ordinance put in place immediately by you, our Town Council, preventing anyone from disrupting our lives here in our beloved Double Oak by building an airport of any type on the property recently purchased. This person has applied for the said SUP twice already. As they say, the third time's the charm. Without an ordinance explicitly worded preventing a helipad, landing strip, et cetera, being built here by him or anyone else, you will be leaving us exposed again to another SUP by someone requesting such an invasive project to happen in Double Oak against the wishes of the majority of its homeowners, the very people who elected you to your positions tonight. Our yard signs will have to be put out yet again throughout the town because those signs and social media and news sources have been our only defense against the wishes of one new neighbor. I can only assume that when the Brawley Farms land was purchased in Double Oak, it was because the Brawleys had done their homework and found that Double Oak was the peaceful, quiet town that allowed horses, and that horses were pastured on both the immediate north and south sides of a property that was also perfectly suited for their horses and the beautiful training facility they wanted to build. Also, that the particular property that they were looking at was zoned for horses and their business. They weren't looking for property in a golfing community where they believed the golfers living there, having had purchased their homes there for their hobby, would welcome them with open arms to work their horses out on the front nine of the golf course. However, these people elected to purchase property previously used for growing hay and playing polo and trail riding that butted right up next to an existing equestrian training barn on one side and a thriving neighborhood on the other to erect a helipad for an aviation lifestyle. Delaying a protective ordinance for our town regarding this person or anyone else's heli-stop will also, in effect, delay our belief in you, our Town Council, have our town, whether you have our town's welfare and best interests at heart and not possibly just your own. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Brian Burns?
Hello. My name is Brian Burns. I live at 125 Willow Oak Court, and I'm standing here, as is the right afforded me under the Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code Section 551.042, and requesting that two items be added to the September second, 2025 Town Council Agenda. First, I'm requesting an agenda item to discuss the fence that's been erected at 250 Simmons Road, which appears to be in violation of Town Ordinance 3.301. This ordinance clearly sets requirements for fence placement, visibility, and compliance with residential standards, and yet concerns have been raised that the structure in question does not meet those requirements. I've already taken multiple steps to raise the issue with our local government. Specifically, I've emailed the Town Council twice, submitted a formal Public Information Act's records request, and filed an official inquiry for positive, for possible ordinance violations. None of these actions have received a single response from a single one of you. This lack of acknowledgement is deeply concerning and is not respectful. Citizens deserve timely and transparent communication when they take the initiative to follow proper procedures and raise issues of compliance. When Town Councils fail to respond, it not only undermines trust but also gives the impression that ordinances are selectively enforced or that citizen concerns simply can be ignored. Furthermore, allowing a fence that may be in violation to remain under draft sets a dangerous precedent, weakening the credibility of town's ordinances and the enforcement process itself. It is the responsibility of our local government to ensure ordinances are applied fairly and consistently and to maintain open lines of communication. With residents who bring forward legitimate concerns, adding this matter to the September second, 2025 Agenda is not only appropriate but necessary to demonstrate a commitment to transparency, accountability, and equal application of our town's laws. Second, I'm requesting that the resolution requesting adoption of citizen decorum and transparency standards I emailed to the mayor and Town Council on August sixteenth be added as an agenda item for discussion. It was highly unprofessional for a planning and zoning committee member to make false accusations and cast dispersions against myself and other citizens of this town. Town Council members have also cast dispersions towards citizens from beyond the dais. Citizens who use their First Amendment rights and raise concerns should not be disparaged by members of our local government, even if those concerns are about our own local government. To be publicly accused of such behavior is unfounded, disrespectful, and violates the spirit of the town's rules of procedure. Town Ordinance Chapter One, General Provisions under Article 1.400, Rules of Procedure of the Town Council. Having P&amp;Z committee members saying that our town is filled with hate to say that we're casting dispersions and calling names against the Schrivenner family, which we are not, is false. Citizens of Double Oak deserve better, respectful dialogue, transparency, and accountability, and those are the foundation of trust in our local government. Thank you, and I hope you'll consider those for addition to the next meeting.
Thank you, Brian. Nan Bowen?
Nan Bowen, 100 Royal Oaks Drive, Double Oak, of course. I have a question for Mr. Gwartney, and I know you cannot answer, but I would like to know where you came up with your numbers. A couple of weeks ago, when you said everybody in Double Oak is rich, and that's why we hate this man, because he's rich, which is rude and disrespectful of you. First of all, I'm not rich, so maybe that's why I hate him. I don't know the man. I don't hate anybody. Very rude. And that's another thing. How do we get away with this at meetings? He's — Brian is completely correct. This is supposed to be polite, friendly, and nice. And Mr. Frisbee, I'd like to know also how in the world you came up with information about us being attacking, saying negative things, the children, the wife, the husband, everybody. And I have a question for you. Can I address him? Is that okay?
I'd prefer that you just dress a council.
Okay, that's fine.
Thank you.
I'd like to talk to you in a minute. About something. Totally forgot where my train of thought was going. Anyway, okay, I guess that's all. I just don't want anybody to think that there's something going on here that's not because all we wanted to not do was have a helipad in the middle of our little environment, and hopefully, knock on wood, that's not going to happen. So, thank you.
Thank you, Nan. Tim Wiznack?
Wiznack.
Wiznack?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that.
My address is 2300 Olympia, Flower Mountain, Texas. And I'm known as a defender of the First Amendment, and I appreciate all of you and what you do. When you raised your hand and took the oath of office, you swore to uphold the Constitution. The First Amendment to the Constitution guarantees the right of the public to speak freely. Ironically, when you raised your hand, your First Amendment right was diminished because you became the government that we're protected from. And when, several weeks ago, when one of your members called up social media posts and took issue with those, I believe that was a violation of the Constitution. When the comment was made that the people that organized the parade should be ashamed of themselves, well, the original Fourth of July was a protest against the King of England. So I think it was very fitting that people protested during that assembly. The First Amendment also protects the right to assembly to take issue with your government. And so both of those were a violation of the oath of office and the Constitution. I appreciate you listening to me, and good luck. And those council people that welcomed feedback from their constituents, they should be applauded and rewarded for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Katie Groth?
I brought homework. I brought y'all copies after this. Katie Groth, 165 Double Oaks Drive. I have two things, actually, I wanted to talk about real quick. Eden Ranch, update. It passed the Parks Board — it was, it passed the Parks Board last Thursday night or a couple, a couple weeks ago. Tyler did change the park. He made it from what they were irritated about being so linear to a ten-acre little area. Great. That means planning and zoning is next. They're not moving forward with Tyler anymore. They're moving forward with a different development engineering group that is also known to be pretty fun to deal with. Regardless, they're still asking for a cluster, and they're still clustering it all next door to us. All your one-half acre lots, I just checked this all last week, and I sent y'all all emails on it, are still clustered in our backyard. Again, Double Oak cannot do anything about it. We can highly suggest they don't put an exit at King's Road. I am no longer in favor of doing King's as even an emergency exit. Why? Because I will share emails that I've already shared with y'all earlier, but I'm going to pass them on hard-wonpy, of Tyler specifically saying that it's only going to be an emergency exit until, until road conditions are improved. Well, yeah, great. That's going to totally help me and my sixteen-year-old and fourteen-year-old, even though the sixteen-year-old just got a ticket today by the Double Oak Police. Anyway, that's going to completely help me because that's going to be five years from now. But it's not going to help Dr. Kay's kids because that's when her kids are going to start driving down King's Road to school or wherever they have to go for a public attendance. Okay, so that's my, so I really hope Double Oak Council stands together and united, and they're, and all you can do is ask, but I hope you unite and ask that they don't put an exit there at all. If they have to have an emergency exit, if that's not, then they can go behind on the other back road, Hawks Road. I mean, because we've already got two exits now on Shiloh. If we put that intersection there and another one a little further north. Okay, that's number one. Number two, communication. I know we're getting frustrated about that, but I'm seeing it from kind of a third standpoint, and it's frustrating. I understand kind of when Brian's coming about. There's a fence that's going up. I've written, I've come in and spoken for an hour emotionally with our town manager. I have asked here at public participation. I have been written again regarding this fence. I cannot get anybody to give me an answer. All they say is a fence permit was allowed. Well, a fence permit says eight feet. Not, that's a lot more than eight feet. I'm not, I haven't measured it myself. I don't dare go on that person's property, but it's a lot more than eight feet. And if we just had an explanation, any kind of explanation, I think it would help the communication gap.
All right. Thank you, Katie. Mike Holland?
Hi. My name is Mike Holland. I live at 341 Oakview Drive. I was witness to a remarkable event on August seventh. A congregation of Double Oak residents unlike any I've ever seen before in this town, been here for thirty years, except for the Fourth of July. Truly remarkable. Couple of thank-yous. Thank you all for your volunteering for the town, for serving all the citizens. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for providing seating for all of us who were outside last, on that open hearing.
That was administration.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. That was much appreciated. I was, like I say, one of two hundred or so people that showed up that night. I spoke several times and brought up, I am a past member of the Planning and Zoning Commission here. I emailed all of you on Monday, a week ago, some concerns that I had about the way things were being done. One of the things that I've learned is that there's a committee that is in charge of reviewing our zoning. And I think it's our, not zoning, our town ordinances. And I think it's a very important role for you all to perform. Ordnances have become out of date. There are things that were done in the 1980s that no longer really are applicable, and I think it's very wise for us to review those ordinances and to take action. One of those ordinances is the noise ordinance, and I brought that up in an email with you guys, and I think we need to revise that. The one we have right now is so general, it's unenforceable. So I really encourage that to be done. I also would like to welcome the Schrivenners to our community, and I hope that they find the joy that Mary and I and our family have found while we've been living here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. David, is it Burdine?
You got it?
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I didn't see you back there.
Good evening. David Burdine, 110 Royal Oaks Drive, Double Oak. It's nice to see everybody. It's nice to have everybody indoors. I would just encourage the council, as they think about the ordinances, as the committees are working on that, they would take into consideration, we don't need a heli-stop, we don't need a helipad, we don't need a heliport, we don't need a drone station for deliveries, we don't need flying bikes. We should pass an ordinance preventing this type of thing from being considered today, tomorrow, ten years from now, right? Let's keep the town quiet. Let's go back to our sleepy little town. We moved here twenty-seven years ago. There were three entrances to this town. There's a whole lot more than that now. It's not as quiet and calm as it was. The cops used to sit and flash their lights, and that was, that was so we would slow down, right? I kind of miss that. I understand things change, and I can't have I understand things change, and I can't have my way. But it sure would be nice. We could just calm things down, get nice and quiet again. And thank everyone for your service. Good night.
Mike, thank you. Or David, sorry, geez. Mike was before. Apologize. All right. Moving on to item number three, consent agenda. All consent agenda items listed are considered to be a routine by the town council, be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member requests in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Information concerning consent agenda items is available for public review. Counsel, tonight we have a one item, and that is discuss, consider, and act on the minutes of August 4th, 2025 meeting. Are there any corrections to the minutes from that meeting?
No.
No corrections?
No.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda item?
I move that we approve the minutes of August 4th, 2025.
Is there a second?
A second.
All right, we have a motion by Councilperson Gwartney and a second by Councilperson Robertson. Lynn, can you please call the vote?
Ms. Robertson?
Aye.
Ms. Wallen?
Aye.
Dr. Kay?
Aye.
Mr. Gwartney?
Aye.
Mr. Dietrich?
Aye.
All right, thank you. First and foremost, as we move into mayor and council and the reports, is I'd like to introduce David Berman. He's sitting over here. Some of you know David. David is our town attorney, and I wanted to introduce him here. He's here if there's anything that comes up from a legal perspective in the upcoming agenda items. We've got the legal expert here to assist us. I also have Cody Hodge. Cody, if you want to raise your hand. Cody Hodge is our town engineer. And he is here to make sure that everything that, that has been said that would be done by planning and zoning is done. And so we will be asking Cody some questions as we go through this as well. In the back, Andrew Weaver. Are you here? All right, Andrew is here. He is our planning and zoning chair. As you saw, he did an amazing job with the meeting on the 7th. And we've asked Andrew to come and do a report out to make sure that what was heard at the planning and zoning was notated, and then the right corrections were done. This is very important, and so we're not going to gloss over this. With that said, mayor and council, or council, we're going to have three minutes at the end to speak, just like the citizens do. But if there's anything right now that's not tied to an agenda item that wants to be shared, Jana, if you want to go, please.
I, I just have one comment. I know there's been a lot of discussion on the ordinances. And we, I'm working with the town administration to get a list of things that we're going to start revising. We're not going to try to do it all at once, but we are going to start tackling one at a time. I'm going to confer with our town attorney to make sure that I follow all the right processes. But we know that a lot of those ordinances are out of date. I've got your emails, and we will start tackling them one at a time.
And, and, well, even though we're not supposed to comment, the one that was brought up is on the list. So. All right. Dr. Kay?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to let everyone know that I was talking to Lee Ferguson today, who's our AtMs representative, earlier today. And the reason why I called her out, when she came and introduced herself in the, one of the June meetings, I was out of town, and I was so bummed because I really want to talk to her. Because one of the things I really wanted to do when I got on council was offer energy resources kind of equal throughout the town. And, and unless you're part of one of those HOA or newer developments, there's no natural gas option. And so I, I wanted to talk to her about, you know, is there an option for, if, at least she can present it? And she said she'll get back to me in about a week. Just some, some option if, to run natural gas through all of Double Oak. Because, you know, when there's the freeze, you don't want to be, you know, like me looking at Taylor Oaks like, oh, they look warm. You know, like I'm sitting here cold, you know, trying to light some fires. Yeah, so I'm hoping that she'll be able to get that to me next week or so, so we can talk about that in a future agenda.
Okay, definitely. Look forward to that.
Yeah.
Mike? Mark?
Nope.
Pat? Okay. I just want to recognize the Planning and Zoning Committee. As I've stated many times in many, many letters or town emails or Friday updates, is I trusted the Planning and Zoning Committee to do their job. We have extremely competent people on that, and they did an outstanding job. They did their homework. Andrew Weaver ran an amazing meeting. And so kudos go out to the Planning and Zoning. The process we have worked. I'm not going to say that all of our ordinances are right, but the process is in place and it worked. So I'd like to say thank you to the Planning and Zoning Committee and Andrew for their hard work in making that August 7th meeting go the way it did. So, thank you. We're going to move on next to Public Works Code Enforcement.
Yeah, I'll be forwarding most of this to Coutsmember Pavarro to give an update on the Roads Committee. But I would like to move to administration, make an announcement. As of tonight, or first thing tomorrow, our new website will be up and active. So we are excited about that. And please, everybody, take a look at it. If there's any feedback that you need, something's not working right, please let us know. Because I've never seen a website transformation go exactly 100% perfect. So, but we've worked hard to make it much more user-friendly, both to the user and to the, to those of us who have to keep it updated. So we're excited to, to open it up tomorrow and to celebrate with it. We're going to be posting the required budget information on our new website tomorrow morning, so.
So citizens, if you run into glitches, things like that, would you please get ahold of the town administration and let us know? This is kind of a soft, soft launch to make sure we get it right. So if we haven't, we can get things fixed. And then really wanted to coincide the new launch with our new fiscal year, which starts on October 1st. So, all right, Chris, thank you. Public Safety, Chief?
We have an experienced applicant for the open police officer position. We'll be interviewing him tomorrow. Looks good on paper, so fingers crossed he turns out to be a good fit, and we can move to fully staffed. We also have an experienced applicant for the open school crossing guard position. We're doing our due diligence and background check right now, but everything's looking good there, so we should be able to fill that spot as well. I spent the last week at the Law Enforcement Management Institute of Texas, down at Sam Houston State University, in their new chief development program. It's the first of two T-CO mandated training sessions that all chiefs must attend within two years of appointment. I'll be going to the second one, I believe, in July of next year.
All right, thank you. Roads Committee.
All righty. So our crack and seal is starting tomorrow. So if you see people out there fixing the roads, that's what they're doing. They're, they're sealing up the roads. And I wanted to mention that Dr. Goodman, when he was the chair of the committee, he had a five-year plan, and he wasn't very, I guess, hopeful that it would actually be achieved. But I can tell you this, with this completion this year, we're on the five-year plan, which basically means that every road in Double Oak will be cracked and, or cracked sealed every five years. So we're, we had, we have like a, you know, a system going for that. And, and it's important to note that one of the biggest roads, which is on this list, is Oak Trail Drive. That's the entire road. That's, that's huge. That's, you know, most of the other ones are about 100 to 500 pounds or whatever. That one's 3,200 pounds of, of sealing material. So that's, that's a big one. And we did it all under budget also. So hopefully, they don't come with us with anything else. But, yeah, so if you see that, then that's, that's what it is.
All right, excellent. Tomorrow, let's get a blast of the town on the streets. So I wasn't sure, I didn't know we were going this fast, though. But we need to get on it, so, excellent. All right. Mike, Drainage?
Drainage will have a meeting with the next town.
Okay, please. All right. New to this agenda for this evening is we're going to have Andrew Weaver, Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission. And he's going to come up and give us a final report from the August 7th meeting in 2025. So, Andrew?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council members, and thank you, citizens. In my opening remarks, oh, Chairman of the Planning and Zoning. Instead of an address, I'm here as the Chairman of the Planning and Zoning. In my opening remarks to the meeting on the 7th, I said that us meeting that night would be in part repaying the debt that the founders incurred when they founded this republic nearly 250 years ago, local citizens meeting locally to examine a local issue and to resolve it locally. And we, in a small part, paid that debt on the 7th. So on the 7th, the commission met to consider three applications, all located at the property of 250 Simmons. Between that meeting and tonight, one of those applications has been withdrawn. So you have in front of you two applications. The first application is to take this 15-acre property and to divide it into five lots. As Mr. Berman would tell you, this is a ministerial decision by both the commission as well as the town council, meaning that if the application has met all of the town ordinances, all of the proper public notices have been made, both publicly on the web, in newspapers, and to the citizens within the surrounding area, then you have to approve that application. Although the engineer's letter stated that the applicant had met all of the ordinances, Commissioner Gillum, and kudos to Commissioner Gillum, whose schedule doesn't permit her to be publicly recognized, but Commissioner Gillum, because she has such an eagle eye, such a stickler for details, noticed there were some parts of the application that were not in accordance with the town ordinances. And as a result, the PNZ's recommendation was not to recommend this application to the county council. It is my understanding that since then, there have been meetings between the developer, the town engineers, and town administration to resolve all of those. And it's my understanding that the engineer will address those after I do. The second application was to rezone those five parcels or lots that were created and turn those into four lots that would be, three would be ranch estates, one would be single-family, and the remaining large property would be Ag 2. This, Mr. Berman, would tell you, is a legislative decision on both the commission's recommendation to the council as well as the council's actual decision, meaning that you're being asked to determine if the proposed zoning is consistent with the property that surrounds that area. The commission found that the single-family zoning for one of the five lots that would be created was not consistent with the surrounding area. Three of the four areas, east, west, and south, all are ranch estates, and single-family is found in a different, more southwesterly direction of our property. So the commission made a recommendation that the property would be zoned as four ranch estates and one agricultural 2. And that was the commission's recommendation. So, Mr. Mayor, that is my report. Again, thank you for the kind words earlier. Thank you to the commission members, all seven present. All did their work well into the, late into the night. And thank you to the town citizens
Correct.
who did a great job as well. Mr. Berman, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much for the opportunity. I appreciate it. Any questions before?
Council questions?
Well, just that everything, we don't know yet if everything has been resolved or?
We're, we'll be working through this and the next steps.
Okay.
So, Andrew, thank you.
Thank you.
So I would like to have our, Cody Hodge, our town engineer, come up to the podium, please.
Good evening, council. Cody Hodge, Half Associates.
I'm going to have you speak, change the mic, come bring it a little bit closer to you. Thank you.
That better.
All right. Cody, in regards to all the hard work that you've worked together with Mr. Frisbee and our town administration, I just have a couple generic questions I want to ask you, but I also then want you to talk through the letter, your letter of approval as well, okay? So, first question I have as it relates to the subdivision replat of 250 Simmons Road, which are items 13 and 14 on tonight's agenda. Have all PNZ recommendations and conditions been incorporated into the replat?
Yes, we've worked with town staff, the developer, and the town attorney to get those taken care of over the last week.
Okay. Do all five proposed lots meet minimum size frontage and ordinance requirements?
No. So two of those are met. The minimum size and ordinance and frontage, they're, they're kind of three different things. The frontage, we have three lots that cannot meet that. And to expand on that a little bit, there's, the way the ordinance is written, you have to have 90% of the subdivision parcels with 150 feet of frontage on a street. Street is defined as a public right-of-way, so basically a public street for each of those lots. So in this layout, we have three lots that cannot meet that requirement. The, the, they all do meet the size requirement, though. So we still have that one exception that's not met.
Okay. So there, so there is an exception, which was identified by the planning and zoning.
Right.
As well as brought to the attention by Mr. Frisbee, correct?
Correct.
And is noted in your report.
Yes.
Okay. Counsel, on items 13, 14 of the replat, what other questions would you have for our town engineer?
So one of the other things that they asked about is creating access easements to the north entrance and to the south entrance so that you can get to those lots. Has that been accomplished?
Yes, we've got access and utility easements, both.
Both, okay.
So my question is, I just want to clarify the public right-of-way. That means there, that three of the lots do not have public right-of-way access. Therefore, like, it's not, the condition's not met, that there's public access to those lots?
Correct.
Okay. That's a big deal.
Do you want clarification on that?
Yes. Our ordinances require, among other things, that lots, every new lot in a subdivision must have at least 150 feet of frontage on a public thoroughfare, a, a public street, effectively. This subdivision, and it is a subdivision, is a bit unusual in that three of the lots are not on a street. They're interior lots, more or less. In lieu of the street frontage requirement, the developer has proposed access easements that meet minimum fire lane requirement with requirements. And so in lieu of street frontage, the plat will, in fact, dedicate and create certain access easements that do. The plat itself, the plat application itself contains language that talks about that, maintenance responsibilities and use. So in lieu of street frontage, the plat has this other access easement alternative. These access easements will serve as private drives. Town will not have maintenance responsibility. Nevertheless, the plat does not meet that one condition in our regulations that gives you grounds for denial if you choose to. But denial is not mandatory. You can still approve nevertheless. I think the point to having street frontage in most subdivisions is to ensure, among other things, first responder access. And I think having these access easements in place and then making sure that the gates for the entrance are available to public, to first responders will meet that requirement.
So I, I have a thing to say.
Okay.
That's okay. So it seems like there's two options, and you can confirm this as the engineer, is you either approve it with a board of adjustment variance condition, because it's a variance to the ordinance. Or, okay, or, or we, have we, like, thought about plan development and what that would be looking like on the engineering standpoint? Like, that it just, it just, it fits all the requirements because plan development, you can have anything you want, really, right? As long as it's all?
Sort of. And it, it, it doesn't require a variance. A variance would apply if it were a zoning requirement. The street frontage requirement is a subdivision regulation, not a zoning one. So you don't need a variance to do this. Plats are approved all the time that don't have strict compliance with subdivision regulations. I'd venture to guess that the vast majority of all plats that are approved by operation of law, by inaction, will contain, some will not strictly comply with that city's subdivision regulations. It's a basis for denial if you so choose. But denial is not mandatory. On the flip side, if they've met all of our requirements, approval would be mandatory, but denial is not mandatory. You can still approve, notwithstanding that deviation. The, the plan development concept is not really appropriate under these circumstances because a plan development application is something that really is for, among other things, mixed uses, innovative development concepts. This is pretty much straight-up large lot, single-family residential zoning. We don't need a plan development, and, and the developer has not, the property owner has not asked for a plan development. And it's their property, not ours. We could, under some, you know, I've seen plan development zoning imposed on property only once, involuntarily. It's, it's not unusual for You know, it's, it's not unusual for cities to impose involuntary zoning on usually larger tracts of land. But plan development, I've seen it done only once, and it was extremely unusual, and it was done in the context of litigation, anyway. It is usually a zoning process where the property owner and the town can negotiate conditions, but we wouldn't want to impose non-consensual plan development zoning, just so that we can impose special requirements on one property owner that we don't apply on everybody else. So the only thing that, the only deviation between strict compliance with our regulations and this plat application is the access easements and the lack of street frontage requirements.
I have, oh, sorry. So I have a question.
I see hands going up everywhere.
So, sorry.
I'm turning up my-
Off of King's Road, I believe we already have two, maybe three, that don't have street frontage, that are behind other houses that have the same easement. And I believe that Ms. Gillum also told us that that's how her street was developed, down Waketon Extension, that it is an easement that they have-
Waketon Extension, years and years ago, was in fact a private drive.
Right.
And when you get to the west of, of Kings, it was nothing but four lots that were private drives. And when those homeowners decided that the expense of repairing that private drive couldn't be worked out between those four owners, they asked the town to take it over.
Right.
And we converted it.
But previous to that, it was the same type setup.
Exactly. Ordinarily, landlocked lots are not a good idea, but that doesn't mean that in all circumstances it's a bad idea. So it's the property owner's property, not ours, I mean.
But what if it gets sold one day? And does it ever come back to the town, that you guys didn't develop this the right way?
Now, in fact, one of the requirements that we imposed on the developer between the P&amp;Z meeting and tonight's meeting were conditions that are set forth in the plat application itself that deal with the access easements, that it clearly state that they are shared private drives, and that each of the homeowners that front or are served by the private drives have maintenance responsibilities. So the responsibility by this plat and that dedication should never fall back on the town.
And it's my understanding, the town took that on. They didn't have to.
Waketon Extension?
On the Waketon Extension.
We didn't have to.
So it's, it's up to the town to decide, once it's a private drive, just like these others that are off of King's Road and the others that I've seen around here in Double Oak. That's all a personal, or a-
Yeah, and a lot of subdivision, especially larger ones, when they want to do something creative that use, I don't know, really narrow streets, for example, I mean, in concept, they're great, and they're all private streets, and, and everybody is willing to have the HOA fund maintenance and operations. And then 30 to 40 years later, when the HOA doesn't exist anymore, it always falls back on the town. Now, under these circumstances, these are just, we're just looking at three landlocked lots in one larger tract. There will always be these permanent access easements on there. The town will never have responsibility, unless it chooses to do that, like we did with Waketon Extension, will never have the responsibility for maintenance and repair. We will have first responder access, though, that's our first concern.
Can I ask one question on that? I'm trying to orient myself to the, the survey plat. Yeah, that, yeah, that's Simmons. Which are the, which are the lots that are the landlocked lots? I'm trying to, is it the, the, the only one that's actually really standing out to me is the one acre in the far corner?
That one. Lot one is a landlocked lot. Lot three and lot two, those one and a half-
Those are the other two.
-at the very bottom, don't have access to a, a public street.
I see a road or access to lot one, but I don't see one to lot two and three.
It is. It's right along the, the, if you're on Simmons Road, the very southern edge of-
Oh, the access easement on the-
Yeah, if you follow the edge, the bottom of the southern, the southern property land of lot four-
And it doesn't go all the way to the back of the east part of the lot.
And it doesn't go to the back of the property.
It goes to the center of lot three.
Got you. All right, I see it now. Thank you.
All right, Mike, yeah, I think, Mike, you got a question?
No, that was it. That was my question.
Other questions, as it relates to items 13 and 14? And again, we're gonna introduce the items here in a second. We're gonna allow Mr. Frisbee and the citizens to speak. In regards to the rezoning, Cody, has the zoning request been revised to reflect the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendations?
It has. We now have ranch estates and Ag 2.
Okay. Is the request compatible with the surrounding land use and consistent with the town's comprehensive plan?
Yes.
Are there any outstanding planning and zoning conditions or concerns that remain unresolved?
The only one would be the exception to the 150-foot frontage.
Correct, on, from the-
To the public street.
Correct. And my last question or comment is, before we open up the public hearing here in a few minutes, based upon your view, do you believe the applicant has fully met technical requirements and planning and zoning recommendations, or are there remaining issues the council should weigh before they vote later on in this meeting?
Short of the one exception to the 150-foot frontage to the public street, they've all been taken care of and meets.
Okay. All right. Other questions for Cody, as it pertains to the rezoning?
It's kind of, like, I wonder if I can ask the chief what kind of, like, problems there will be by not having that public right-of-way to these homes? Like, as a first responder, directly, how is that gonna work for the police department?
Will you be discussing that, Ken, in terms of conversations?
Later, okay.
Okay. Yeah, the, there's, the Double Oak Volunteer Fire Department has been involved in discussions about how that road has to be, what has to be there, all of the utilities and everything, so it's, it's being discussed, even though it's not our road, it's being discussed that they develop it as the road should be.
Ken, then those issues are generally much larger for the fire departments than they are for the police department. We're getting basically a passenger vehicle down there. They, they have much larger equipment to, to try and get in.
Okay. Any other questions for Cody? Cody, obviously hang tight, because as, as we go through the, the next section. So, with that said, anything else, David, comment-wise?
No, I'm good.
All right. Then we're gonna move on to the new business agenda, item 13. We're gonna hold a public hearing on a request to subdivide/replat a 15.004-plus-or-minus-acre tract, abstract number 1334, Simon C. White survey, or more commonly known as 250 Simmons Road, into five separate lots. And when I, I'm gonna open up the public hearing, and I'm gonna ask Mr. Frisbee to come up, and, so it is 7:54. The public meeting, the public hearing is now open.
Good evening, council. My name is Ken Frisbee. I live at 6775 Florence Road in Justin, Texas. We initially came to the town of Double Oak with my client looking to purchase this property. Prior to purchasing this property, we actually met with the P&amp;Z and the town and the fire department to just give them a general idea of what we wanted to do as far as the subdividing of the property. Maybe something that's a little different that we're doing is that we're doing all four of them at one time, where there's been other properties in the, in the town of Double Oak that they've only done one house at one time, and they've done an access easement road. So we've done the exact same thing. I'd also like to point out that the initial plat design was based off the way that the town of Double Oak's engineers that worked with my landscape architect, civil engineers and surveyors. So that's how we came up with the sizes of the lots and the locations of the lots. In the P&amp;Z meeting, Ms. Donna, I don't remember her last name, but she's the one-
Gillum.
Gillum. She's the one that pointed out to us that we didn't have the proper width of lot number one, and that it needed to be a minimum of 150 feet. So we agreed that we would change that, so we've increased the size of that lot to over one acre, and we've increased it to 150 feet, as she requested. We also, dealing with the aspects of the access easements, we actually had that written on the south end of the property that was on the original plat. It just wasn't seen by the P&amp;Z, but that question was brought up, and, and we agreed that we, we wanted that anyway, and we, on the northern side. And both of these easements are not only access easements for the people, for, for emergency services, and for utilities, so we can run water and electric and gas back to the, you mentioned Atmos Gas. I've ran gas to the property, so I've extended the line, so somebody could actually hook onto that line and have gas now. So we've done that on their request. We've actually went a step further, working with, with the fire department, emergency services, and working with our neighbor to the north, Bob. We actually built a 20-foot-wide double gate on the north end of the property that adds complete access coming down Bob's gravel driveway. We did this with Bob, with the fire department, and it gets us to the center of the property, so if emergency services needed to do, they can come in that gate as well. So we have four points of access for emergency services.
Anything else that you'd like to add, Mr. Frisbee?
Just that, that everything that we've done, I've worked directly with all administration, and everything we've done as far as our plans are, are questions of, can we do this? And I've, I've operated on their directions. If they've asked me to change something, I've changed it. I want to comply. I just, this is just my job, and part of the process I have to go through. So I, I think we've met all of our expectations. We agree to all the expectations and the changes that the P&amp;Z asks us to do in order to move forward for y'all to approve, and, you know, we've done our job, and I appreciate your time. Any other questions?
I, I just have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Four points of ac-
Oh, excuse me. There were four points of access? On here, I'm only seeing three, so I have the, the one up by Broly Farms, then I have the two-
Yes, ma'am.
The two that go into the Act 2 land. Where's the fourth point of access? Am I missing it?
So we created a, a 20-foot wide-
Oh, over on this side.
Specifically for emergency services on the north side of the property, dead center of the property, to access the entire property.
I didn't see that originally.
Yes, ma'am.
So thank you for that, pointing that one out.
Yes, ma'am.
Because that one's the one I was missing.
So, I know this will probably come later. I know you're gonna put two retention ponds in here, and I just, it would, it would be nice, I know this is not how the process goes, but to have a, I think you guys did a drainage study, right?
Yes, ma'am. I had civil engineer do the plans, and, yes, ma'am, you are correct. Somebody spoke about that, about, are we gonna mitigate the water from, that's from the construction? Yes, ma'am. And we're also going to capture all the water from all the structures, and that will also be directed to the ponds as well.
Okay.
And we're gonna use the ponds to irrigate, so we'll be able to irrigate the entire property to keep it green and nice.
Yeah, I mean, we have to worry about our Oak Trail people. We can't have, you know-
Absolutely.
You don't know, and we're not trying to just, you know, we're just trying to do it right.
That's why, that's why we did two ponds.
Yeah. Okay, perfect. Yeah, 'cause, I mean, the Vickery project, it just wasn't, it's not working as it was planned, you know? So we don't want another problem of Double Oak doing it to itself, right?
Right.
And running water into Oak Trail.
We actually, the way that our civil engineer planned it is, we're gonna actually accept that center low area into the new pond, so it'll actually mitigate some of that water coming so fast, it'll go into the pond and distribute out.
Oh, so you're actually gonna make a low point? Because, yeah, that's the point. You guys are sitting higher than others.
It has a low point.
Okay.
It has a low point. We're gonna utilize that low point to create a pond to capture the drainage water that's coming through now, to mitigate it from, it's, it's not gonna stop, it's gonna slow down, because it'll go, you know-
Is there a way that we can publish the, that drainage study and the flow study that you've done with the ponds? Like, I think it's probably part of the-
I've submitted, everything that I've done out here, I've submitted to the city on the portal.
Okay.
All the engineering, all the plans, all the civil engineering, any, every, everything, everything we've done there, I've applied for permits and received permits.
No, it would, it would be good to, to publish that. That's not part of our package.
We'll get that over to the drainage committee.
They have that.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, but, yes, ma'am, but they have that.
Thanks.
Any other questions for Mr. Frisbee? Okay? We are still in a, in a public hearing. So, citizens, I want to get this right, I had a lot of folks sign up that said rezon and replat, which are, rezon is the first item, replat is the second item. So when I call your name to come up, we are on the first item, which is the replat, okay? And if you signed up for only to talk to one or the other, just let us know, but I'm gonna go down the list, so Brian Burns?
I'll speak just for replat, save people time.
Replat, okay, so we're on the replat, or no?
No, rezon.
Yes.
Yeah, we're on the replat now, so please come on up.
I thought you were just going through lists first.
Um, you know what? That's a great idea. Let's take a second. All right, so you said replat.
Yes, sir.
All right. Jean Hillier, you had replat and rezon.
Yes, I have comments on each one.
Okay, all right. Nan Bowen, you had replat?
I was writing this, like, you can skip me.
You sure?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I want to make sure. Kenan Moffett, you've got replat, rezon.
Replat.
Replat. Katie Groth, you have replat, rezon.
Replat.
All right. Mike Holland, you have a blank.
Both.
Both? All right, let me get that written down. Sterling Caraway, replat and, correct?
Just skip.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
Okay, well, if you change your mind, if you and Nan change your mind, let us know. All right? And Billy Garrett, you are rezon.
Well, where does the drainage fall? The replat or the rezon?
Replat.
Probably replat.
Okay.
Okay, all right. If for some reason, as I've done this, I skipped, somebody just raise your hand and let me know, because I want to make sure we, so Brian Burns on the replat, so please come on up.
Brian Burns, 125 Willow Court. I had a whole thing, sorry? Yeah. Are you saying I'm not tall? I've never been accused of not being loud. Brian Burns, 125 Willow Court. I actually had a whole thing written up, surprise, surprise, but, well, first, I just want to thank Mr. Frisbee. I can't address people directly, but I do want to thank Mr. Frisbee for coming here. I know that the P&amp;Z meeting can be very contentious, and to come back and to eloquently actually represent what the changes are, I think was very nice. I can't officially thank him, but I can after the meeting. But I am here to actually ask that you do deny the applications for one reason, which is because there's so many complexities to it, and as much as the Scrivener family wants to keep it in the family, and I, I think it's a wonderful idea, I truly do, because there's no guarantee of that, I think for the sake of the town and to avoid any having to go through the Board of Adjustments for variances to the town ordinances, because it doesn't fit within the ordinances, I think it'd be better if we just ran it through as an actual plan development. And I know that Mr. Frisbee, Mr. Scrivener, they've worked with the town engineer, they've worked hard with the town, but I think in the long run, for the town's sake and for the Scrivener family, having it go through the PD process is probably the right way to go, and I just ask that you consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Jean Hillier on replat.
Jean Hillier, 170 Training Oaks Drive. Just a quick reminder, Mayor, you've stated the last two months, we should let the process work, which has been going on. To that end, I respectfully request the town deny the replating request. We get one chance to get this right for perpetuity, not just the current situation. There are deficiencies in the replating request that we in the audience or hearing have been corrected, at least mostly, but I don't know what you all have, but public hasn't been either, A, notified that that's been done, or have an opportunity to see it. So that's lack of transparency, and that's all talk, and, you know, why isn't that stuff on file and available for us to see? Also, there's, it would be appropriate for more detailed information regarding roads, drainage, and access for this. Specifically, it came up earlier about two ponds, are these ponds retention or detention ponds? This was noted in a lot of the drainage study meetings, all four of which I attended, and it's important, because they're kind of at a high level. Yes, there's a, there's a spot in the middle, but that doesn't mean that there won't be runoff, and that needs to be considered. I don't think that we can afford to unwittingly, or because we want to be nice guys, to hurry. I think that the plans should be available to the public prior to approval, and it needs to be done right before it's, it's approved, and I, again, that's allowing public access to see those documents. I think it'd be appropriate to have these documents presented, or redone, and presented to the P&amp;Z, so that they can do their due diligence and make a recommendation of the town council, both for now and for in the future.
Thank you. Kenan Moffett on replat.
Kenan Moffett, 140 Shady Oaks Lane. First of all, I am not opposed to the Scrivener, I'm not opposed to them having homes, okay? But I, it appears to me that we have too much shifting sand still going on. And for that purpose, I would ask that you deny, postpone until all of these things can be put in writing and documented. They need to be, these plans need to make sure that everything is reasonable, it's understandable and it's measurable. Because unless it's documented and you have some standards to measure against, it did not happen. Just any day, if it's not documented, it didn't happen. So all of the information that was from half-engineering was from last Friday. And some of those things, yes, we've corrected, but I could not find it on the, the small thing here. It just doesn't show up even with the magnifying glass. So I would encourage you to say, let's just take a breather, hold on. We've been working on this for six months. Two to three more weeks is not going to make a hill of beans difference. Thank you.
Thank you.
Katie Grote, 165 Double Oaks Drive. This is a little confusing and frustrating to me because it's so different than what I have familiar with, a different city that I've helped significantly and watched a lot of Flower Mountain. I know we have this process and y'all keep pushing it, but this process with y'all started way before any resident had a chance to voice their concern. It started before this lane was apparently even purchased or even possibly for sale. This developer has said tonight, he's been meeting with all of our different departments and getting, that's why he's recommending what he's recommended. But now this process is inviting the citizens' concerns. And tonight, along with last August 7th, is when y'all have got to listen to our concerns because until now, we didn't know. And we still, I still don't have a clear vision of exactly what this guy is wanting to do. I haven't seen like, with Eden Ranch, I see exactly where they're planning to put each house. I don't see where they're planning to put each house. If that's been released, I just haven't seen it, then shame on my ability to read. But there's a soccer field. What's going to go in in case, since there's not going to be a landing helicopter? Have we thought about that? We still want the same plot? That single-family home, is it just going to be a single-family home? I'm not against a single-family home, but I've heard recommendations that it's not just going to be a single-family home, it's going to be a multi-multi-car garage with just a little single-family home attached to the top for our zoning purposes. Well, how is that going to affect our drainage? And supposedly, there's been a drainage study. None of the residents have gotten to see it. I didn't even know there was one done. Who did it? These are the frustrations that residents, citizens are having with this particular project. And what I would say, we, I will agree with everybody else who's spoken up here besides Mr. Frisby, that needs to be denied or put off until we can get these questions answered. So planning and zoning, that awesome lady that sat right there when I watched it on TV, I was out of town anyway, and she picked it and I, I mean, I was just amazed at her. I forgot her name, but she amazed me. So she can go through it and see exactly what, again, with what they said they've quote fixed. It's hard to establish trust unless we see proof, measurements behind what has supposedly been fixed. I'm really concerned about drainage. I'm really concerned about what else they're going to do with this property besides just the four houses. If it's a soccer field, are there going to be lights? Is there enough room on this narrow entrance for a soccer field people to go in and play a game, even practice a game? I mean, that's nine cars, easy, just for one team. Two teams is 18 cars. Those are my concerns. Please deny this.
Thank you.
My name's Mike Holland. I live at 341 Oakview Drive. As I stated earlier, I'm a prior member of the P and Z. In my work life, I was the final quality control inspector for the safety of 150 people at a time. You guys were the final quality inspectors for this project. The town is overlooking, looking over your shoulder to find out what impact this is going to have upon us. And the people that are downstream from this development, though we've heard some talk about retention ponds and those kinds of things, none of the folks have seen that, that information or had a chance to review or have perhaps their own engineer take a look at to make sure it's not going to impact them. This piece of land does not sit on a level piece of ground. It slopes off to the west. So the people that are downstream from it may see impacts as a result of that. And they deserve the right to be able to review the documents, to be able to determine what impact it may have upon them. I emailed all of you and talked about plan development, plan PD zoning. We have a development just off of King's Road on Victory Lane that has 12 homes on it. It was about maybe a 15, 20 acre piece of land when it was first planned out. That's essentially what we're looking at here, the last probably development in town. So at some point in the future, that land is going to be developed. Mr. Frisby, I'm sorry, Mr. and Mrs. Scrivener, their daughters may live there for a long time. I wish my kids all lived in town. They don't. And as we all know, when people grow up, they move away and at some point, that land is going to be sold. The zoning that you are setting, the replat that you're looking at, is going to go into the future. And at some point in the future, the future council is going to have to try and make sense of this to be developed for the rest of the acreage and the rest of the homes that will eventually be built there. And that's a real problem if you don't do the plan, PD zoning. So I would urge you to deny this. I, we may not be able to compel them to do PD zoning, but if you deny this, then that would be the logical step for, I think, for them to come back at you with. And I think that's what needs to be done because that, it has so much more documentation, so much more is presented to the town, be able to see what is going to be done, that it will alleviate problems now and when Mr. Frisby is developing the land. And in the future, when the future council has to try and figure out, okay, how can we rescue these other isolated lots that aren't on a public street? So there are a lot of different moving parts here. And I think you probably should deny this and see if they can come back with P and Z zoning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Billy Garrett, 103 West Carruth Lane. Obviously, I want to talk about drainage. Almost a year ago, we had several drainage meetings regarding the drainage study that went on for the whole town. We haven't heard any feedback out of those meetings. Carruth Estates, when it was our meeting, we had numerous people. We weren't even on the list. I live on a lot that should have a retention pond on it, if you ask me, because that's where all the water goes. Yes, there's been a drainage study done, apparently, but there were several people last week at the P and Z meeting that talked about the water in the Oaks and how it impacts them. There are several people in Carruth Estates that have runoff water coming from a lot roughly in that area. So that's something that you guys really need to think about. The fact that we did a big drainage study with this lot, how did it impact this lot? What is it going to do? And that, that's where, and that's why I really thought, because if you just replat the land and you don't build anything on it and you don't change anything, then that's why rezoning. But I think that's something that you really should take into consideration, the fact that drainage is a big contention in this town and everybody seems to experience it. We had a bunch of meetings and we never heard anything back about it after those meetings. There's never been anything done, nothing's ever came and been on an agenda since then. So it's something that you really, really need to think about. So Dr. K, I applaud you for already, already going there, but I think it's, that's just my biggest concern, especially for Carruth being on the backside and the neighbors to the south, which is who it would probably impact the most. So, thank you.
Thank you. There's no, no other names on the list, so it is eight.
Can I speak?
Sure.
Hold on.
Yeah, come.
Can I?
Oh, hold on a sec.
Can I take these plates?
Yeah, go ahead and come on up and identify yourself so I can capture it. And this is in regards to the replat, correct? Okay.
Mickey Spagnola, 319 East Carruth Lane. That's Carruth Estates. No one asked the question about, and maybe Mr. Frisby can answer it, I don't know, where are these retention ponds going to be? Because the way I, why I ask this is I don't know if it's a retention pond, but on Bollie's property, there's a pond and it drains straight into Carruth Estates. One of the people back there lives, it drains right through her yard. There's four houses that that pond, when it overflows, and is there, can he guarantee that that pond's not going to overflow? Because if it overflows, believe me, water goes downhill and downhill goes into Carruth Estates. And when it goes through Carruth Estates, not only do we have 56 houses there, 50 of them, all their water and Mr. Bollie's goes through my backyard to get out under 407 to go to the pond in Lantana. So please ask him, what happens when the thing overflows? What is the resolution to when it fills up? And what's it retaining? Is it rainwater? Is it water from the houses when they water their grass? Are they on a septic tank when the septic pumps come out? Those are the questions that need to be asked because the retention pond sounds great, but when it overflows and it comes into Carruth Estates, that comes into our property. And no one has ever done anything about the pond in Bollie's when it overflows. As a matter of fact, he's got a pipe that drains out when it overflows into Carruth Estates. And the property owner's been told by the former town engineer that he has the right to do that. I don't know how that is, but I'm concerned where those ponds are and where that water's going to go when it overflows. And by the way, I just wanted to ask, the P and Z commission did a great job. I had to watch for five hours from afar and they did a heck of a job of asking the questions they need to ask. And I think the town council, who gives Mr. Frisby all the time in the world to talk, he's got to ask, answer the question about where that water is going. And I appreciate your guys' time and letting me come up here, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Andrew?
Andrew Weaver, P and Z chair. I'd like to help the council understand where it is and some of its options. And Mr. Berman, please back me up. This particular action is under Texas law, under a shot clock, shot clock, which is 30 days. And if the commission, if the council does not dispose of it, then by de facto, it is approved, okay? That shot clock for this action started the 7th of August, okay? There's one more council meeting. So if you don't dispose of it at the next council meeting, meaning either approve it or disapprove it, then you will de facto have approved it. So you need to understand whether you approve or if you decide tonight to table the motion, so to speak, understand this, unlike the next application, is under a 30-day shot clock. We, the Planning and Zoning Commission, were under a 30-day shot clock. We had to meet that. Then once we took our action, you, the clock started again. Mr. Berman, did I get that correct?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. I just want to help the council as it moves forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
So, yeah, come up, absolutely.
A couple of things. We're here to petition for a new plat on the property. Feel like we're kind of getting down a rabbit hole again. We, we, we have abided by all the laws, rules and regulations of planning for the plat.
Correct.
We in no way have to tell people where a house is going to be on a person's private property, just as we didn't ask them when they built their house, it's here on private property. We had the plant, the houses located on the plat, we were asked to remove them, so we did, to address the fact of what we're building, when we're building this. We're going to spend over $10 million adding houses to this property. It's going to have a huge tax effect for the town of Double Oak. We're not putting in trailer houses, multifamily, cheap houses. We're building multimillion dollar homes that, that are very nice, that are, meet all the requirements.
Okay.
As far as the drainage.
Yeah, yeah, we need to stay on the replat. I understand what you just said. Stay on the replat, please.
I was trying to answer questions that were asked.
No, I know.
Okay, so as far as the drainage, as it sits right now, the water drains through that property on the southwest side, comes from about center, middle of the property, goes down the property towards the south. It does not drain west. It slopes to the low spot in the property. We know this because I had civil engineers look at that. Civil engineers have designed a drainage plan specifically for each lot and that has been turned in. I don't know if I'm required to give it to the, to the public or not, but that's been turned in. If you go to the Street of Oak Trail and High Oak, there's actually a, if you will, I call it Creek, Rocky Creek drainage area on the west side to the west of High Oak, but on Oak Trail, that the water, it's been draining there for, I don't know, 50 years, 100 years in that, in that ditch. So we're not changing where the water flows with the ponds that y'all questioned about. We're capturing water from what we're building. Yes, it's going into, I can't say that the pond won't, it won't rain four inches and water won't come out, but it's, it's, it's the same four inches of water if the pond was there or if the pond wasn't. Does that make sense?
Yes.
And the, again, we've turned in all the plans according, we've followed all of the guidelines. We've done everything that the P and Z has asked when it comes to subdividing the property.
Thank you. So it is now 8:25. We're going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Now, counsel, if you need to clarify something from Mr. Scrivener, you absolutely can ask him questions. Mr. Hodge, you may be called on as well to ask or to answer questions while the council debates this. So just again, to, to reiterate that this is about the replat of the property at 250 Simmons Road. So counsel, I'm going to open it up for debate or questions.
I have questions. Not that I always have questions, but I always have questions. Okay, so we've heard a lot here. So I want some clarification to understand what we needed to have. Yeah, my mic is on here. Am I close enough now? Okay, so first of all, thank you for talking about the clock because I, that was one of my first questions is, I've been told we have a clock. We do have a clock of 30 days from the time that P and Z finished. So thank you very much, Andrew Weaver, for letting us know that and reiterating that to us so we understand that. Okay, so my next question is, are we required to have on the plat the houses that would be set on the lot? Is that usual and normal in what is required of a plat? Is that usual and normal in what is required of a plat? Anybody that knows, please answer.
Building lines required to be shown, locations of houses, that's the building permit process.
Okay, so it does have lot lines with easements and all, and it does say 150. I have mine blown up. The one that is in the packet, that is in the packet is the one I'm looking at. Not something that I have in front of me, but the one that was in the packet that was put out shows 150 feet. Looks like it was increased to that from the 130 before. And it shows, you have to blow it up pretty big. I have it at, I think, 148 or 150 percent on my laptop. So, it's in the council packet that was put out with the agenda. Sorry.
Page 14. Hold on, hold on. It's the page 14. Yeah.
Page 14. Okay, sorry.
Stay within, with the council.
So, so I'm looking at that. Okay, so that was one of my questions from what was said. And then my other question is, is drainage normally a part of what we need as a council to look at to approve a plat?
Cody?
Just asking the question.
Short answer, yes, you would look at the drainage as part of the plat review to make sure it all works together.
Okay, so it was not included with this?
We didn't get it.
None of us have seen it.
We haven't seen it.
No, it's not in, it's not in our packet, it wasn't in the public packet. The drainage study wasn't.
It was unequivocally turned in.
Okay, so we need to ask our...
So it was turned in, we...
We're not?
So in terms of the documents...
Typically, when we get those, those are part of the construction plan documents, not the plat documents. That's what we have historically done as a town.
Okay.
Okay. All right. And Lynn, you just verified that, too? Okay.
And Pat, like, that's kind of the difference, is if it goes Plan Development, then all of it's given to us in advance, where if we approve it like this, then we, it just goes basically to administration and to Marshall and their group, and they do everything. We don't have any other say after that.
But that's the way it's been done in the past.
Yes, true.
Correct.
For that one.
That's a legal way to be done in the past. Maybe?
We can do it that way.
Okay. All right, so Chris, could you say that one more time?
Historically, in this town, drainage plants have always been part of the building permit process.
I hate to say, but after the drainage study, and yeah, I went to all four meetings as well, just like you, Mayor, and the town knows a lot about drainage now, you know? So we're, everyone's concerned. I live on the backside of Taylor Oaks, and guess what? My house is like underwater all the time, you know? And that's, was that ever considered when they built Taylor Oaks? Maybe, yeah, sure they did, but it's a reality, you know, that I have to deal with that now. And maybe I should know, but I don't get to know that stuff until after I buy it, too.
So another thing I'll ask then, because I'm just trying, I'm trying to understand this, is if it's not included as a part of this, when it goes to being built, or this, when it goes to that part of it, where they say, these are the houses, this is where they're going to sit, this is where that is, does the public have a chance to look at that and comment before, I'm asking a question, before the, before it happens or is approved by the town administration?
No, that is not part of the building permit review process. It is sent, once we get that, it would be sent and reviewed by our engineer to make sure, from an engineering perspective, that the drainage, the drainage and water issues are taken care of. So it's not just town staff, like, I mean, it's town, then we would send that to our town engineer for review.
So the construction plans come in, and they have drainage, they have the topography, they have the erosion control, everything is within these construction plans. That's what goes between our town engineer and between the builder. And that all gets approved before we even start putting homes on there, or we start looking at putting homes on there. So first of all, the construction plans are approved, and all that's in the construction plans.
But it could still be to the detriment of some citizens and their, and their homes. It could change things. That doesn't guarantee that it, and not that we ever can guarantee that, but there will be people who are more impacted than others, that they won't even necessarily be notified or anything. That's my beef with it.
Thing of that is, is that why we have our town engineer? He's the one that looks at it, he looks at their drainage plants, he sees if it's feasible. If it's not feasible, he comes back to them and he says, hey, this is not going to work. That's where you have to put his expertise into this, is our town engineer.
And, to be quite honest with you, I don't think we'll know until it rains. I mean, that's how we find out. That's how anything works.
Yeah.
I mean, just, that's reality.
Well, I mean, obviously, a big piece of grass will absorb the water way better than five houses. Like, that's the reality. There's going to be more runoff, more cement.
That's absolutely true. It's true for all of our houses.
Yeah, exactly. So it's not going to be the same amount of water coming out. It's going to actually be more water.
So it's how they then capture and make sure it stays on their property.
Exactly.
But there's going to be more water coming out, but there's retention ponds that weren't there before.
True.
So...
And has the town...
We're not having the drainage study.
Has our town engineer already looked at that?
But that's not our job.
Has our town engineer already...
That's the engineer's job.
That is correct. That is the town engineer's job.
It has not been submitted, the construction plans have not been submitted to the town.
And at the moment, that water is completely uncontrolled.
At least now you may have a control.
And the only time you're going to have overflow is if it overflows the ponds, and that will be in an event, and that would have been completely uncontrolled water going off that lot, right? At least now, with the ponds, there will be a buffer, and that's what the ponds are for. The ponds aren't for absorbing everything in a catastrophic event. They're there as a buffer in a normal event, to buffer the water. And with two ponds, their buffer get even more, and so it's going to be controlled, is what it is. If those overflow, there's nothing you could have done even before they were there, because that water was uncontrolled.
So, Mr. Frisbee, you have...
Well, I was...
Mayor, we can't answer questions unless he answers our question.
That is correct. So...
Berman?
Yeah, he's the builder. It's not part of the public hearing process.
I'm trying to answer questions. Mark did it perfectly. If it rains four inches on the dirt over there today, I can't mitigate that. Y'all can't approve a plat based off whether it's going to rain or not. We have a process to follow with the drainage. It's a valid question, and which we do work with the town's engineers, my engineers, my civil engineers, when we go through the process of applying for the building permit. It's just our job, it's what we do. This happens in every city, every day. And the neighbor, or the town, or a person may not like that, but that doesn't mean you can't approve it. We're following the law, and...
So, yeah, well, again, we're talking about the replat.
Mark answered the drainage perfectly.
Okay.
So, are the ponds a part of this replat discussion or not?
No.
Okay, then I won't ask my next question.
This is specifically about the replat. Not the, not the type of houses, not the, where they're going to be located, just the replat to make sure. So Cody, if you would come up again, please, and if you could talk about, so, as of about, what, 3 o'clock today, we were still working out details between the town engineer and Mr. Frisbee and the town administration. Nothing's been hidden or not supplied to any public source. The fact of the matter is, at 3:30 today, we were still making sure that everything was in place, that Mr. Frisbee had met all the requirements that were set forth by the Planning and Zoning Commission. So could you please talk about the letter that you provided to the town this afternoon?
Sure. So the letter that you have in front of you is based on that call we had this afternoon with all the parties. We ran through everything that we had left, questions, you know, everything is resolved short of this one item that's listed. The plat really addresses the lots and the dividing, and the 150-foot drainage requirement is the only thing that we don't have met on the plat.
But everything else has been met in terms of the requirements for the plat?
For the plat, yes.
From the Planning and Zoning?
Right.
Okay. Thank you. Any more discussion about the replat? Is there a motion? On, so, excuse me. So moving on to item 14, discuss, consider, and act on request to subdivide replat 15.004 plus or minus acre tract, abstract number 1333, Simon C. White survey, or more commonly known as 250 Simmons Road into five separate lots. Chris, any final comments on this before we...
No, I think it's been talked about enough.
Okay, so we are to point, council, is there a motion to approve or deny item 14?
I move that we approve the plat. Patrick? I move that we approve the plat for 250 Simmons Road into five separate lots.
Second? Okay, we have a motion by Councilperson Gortney, a second by Mayor Protem, Deputy Mayor Protem, excuse me, Dietrich. Lynn, can you please call a vote?
Mr. Gortney?
Aye.
Ms. Robertson?
Nay.
Mr. Dietrich?
Aye.
Ms. Willen?
Aye.
Dr. Kay?
Nay.
All right, the item passes. We're now going to move on to...
Patrick, when you order people sitting down, please.
If we could have you in the back, please sit down, just to make sure. So now we're moving on to item 15. Public hearing on a request to rezone 15.004 plus or minus acre tract, abstract number 1334, Simon C. White survey, or more commonly known as 250 Simmons Road, from Ag 1 Agriculture District to Ag 2 Agriculture District, Ranch Estates District, and Single Family District, as is noted. I would like to ask our town engineer to come up before we open the public hearing. In regards to item 15, has the applicant met the requirements for, that came from the planning and zoning as it relates to item 15?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I'm going to go ahead, and it is 8:39. I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing. This is specific to the rezone. We've got some citizens that we'll be bringing up. First, Mr. Frisbee, is there anything that you would like to address as it relates to the rezone?
Ken Frisbee, 6775 Florence Road, Justin. Thank you, council. We revised the lot zoning, the way that the P&amp;Z requested, the way they wanted us to change the, there's one lot that's Ag 1, which is actually a temporary zoning, it shouldn't have been there, but it's been that way since '88. We changed that to what they wanted us to, to Ag 2. And then all the other residents in the entire area are RE, and they ask us to change the one lot, number 1, from a single family to RE, and we have complied and done that, and we've actually increased the size of the lot as well.
All right, thank you. And that has all been officially been provided to the town engineer?
Yes, sir, we gave all the information to the town engineer and the town administration, make sure we did everything in accordance to the requirement for approval, and we've met those satisfactions.
Okay, thank you. So, citizens, we have Gene Hillier that was on for rezone.
On the rezone, again, I'm disappointed that the developer, and it appears to be the town is in a hurry to get this done, and those of us who would like to see this in print and hard copy have not had the opportunity to do so, which is very concerning, because once again, this is permanent, this is forever. Secondly, the one lot that's, I think it's Lot 4, that's requesting to be rezoned, Ag 2, is a large property. At some point in time, it's not unrealistic to expect that in the future, someone might propose to subdivide that and build some additional homes. And I think that that perhaps ought to be taken into consideration, and the town council, I'm requesting that you send that back to take that into consideration. Also, I am in agreement with what's been said before about a plan development, because, again, as was stated at the planning and zoning meeting by our attorney, it's entirely possible that this won't be a family compound for the rest of the existence of Double Oak. So let's do it right. Let's get it done once, because if we don't do it right now, it's going to be hard to come back and clean up, or almost impossible to clean up in the future. And I think we've seen that in some of the results from the drainage study. It's called the law of unintended consequences. So since we are very aware of drainage issues, can we at least do our best to get this right? And although, yes, there's two ponds, where there may have been one pond, there's going to be a lot more pavement. So please keep that in mind. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mike Holland?
My name's Mike Holland, 341 O'Phill Drive. I also am concerned about the seven-and-a-half acre plot, Lot 4, that at some point in the future, that ground will be developed, and that we don't have easements, or we haven't seen, there's going to be easements for those additional homes to be built and zoned in the future. And we also haven't, there was a lot of discussion about working with the town engineer by the, by the developer and those kinds of things. A lot of that work goes through P&amp;Z as well. And so, just the fact that some of this stuff is developed with, with working with the engineer and with the developer, a lot of that data is seen by P&amp;Z. And if it's seen by P&amp;Z, then the town people will have a chance to see it as well. So, plan development is made to encompass multi-use, so we have three different zonings on this piece of ground, and that's what plan development is designed to do. So I'm really concerned about the seven-and-a-half acres that's going to be ruined into the future, and that we don't have a plan of what's going to happen to that. If I was Mr. Schrivenner, I would look at that and go, well, at some point in the future, some of my descendants are going to have to deal with the fallout of how this has developed, and they're going to want to sell this ground at some point in the future. And he's actually hurting himself by not following through on doing all of that work in advance. At least have a generalized plan and make the easements in place for those different pieces of ground. There's a lot of things that could be done to ease that process for his future, for his kids in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. I had Billy Garrett rezone?
No.
Okay. Any other citizen want to comment on rezone? Okay, it is 8:45. The public meeting, the public hearing is closed. So now we move into item 16, council, discuss, consider, and act to approve an ordinance to rezone a 15.004 plus or minus acre tract, abstract number 1334, Simon C. White survey, or more commonly known as 250 Simmons Road, from Ag 1 Agriculture District to 1 Ag 2 Agriculture District. Check my math, please, as we go through, Mr. Frisbee. 1 Ag 2 Agriculture District, 4 Ranch Estates District. Did I get that right? Okay, I just want to make sure I said it right. So, so, so council, I'm going to open it up for some, some discussion amongst the council. But before we do that, again, you can just nod, you don't have to come up. So Cody, you have worked with Mr. Frisbee, and he has complied with everything that was requested. Okay. All right, so council, any questions, concerns, comments, debate? So, counsel, any questions, concerns, comments, debate?
So, it's kind of funny, the same kind of thing, when you look up Ranch Estate, that's where, you know, the same thing with the public, right away, you have 150 feet of frontage on a public road. So, I don't, it's kind of weird because they both kind of have the same kind of things in both of them. I still think we should go plan development on this one. I think you just get to, it just, it fits in that category way better. When you look at the ordinance and you read it, it just, it fits perfectly in that one. It doesn't, this one, we're making exceptions. So, it's just, I just want to throw it out there, but that's, it doesn't fit in how it is right now. It's messy, to me, but...
Attorney Berman?
So, unlike the plat application process, which is much more technical, the rezoning application or the rezoning process is purely discretionary with the council. I mean, obviously, you can't act arbitrarily and capriciously, but your goal needs to be to consider the application based on what you believe to be in the best interests of the public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. That's the standard for zoning. This is clearly not grossly incompatible with surrounding properties. And all they're asking for is Ag 2 on 1-3 and 1/2 acre lot. All of the rest is ranch estates, which is entirely consistent. I mean, these are, these are large lots, single-family uses that are entirely consistent with all the surrounding areas. Understand that it's the property owner's property. The applicant is asking us to rezone it to allow them to use their property in the way that they want to use it for, and it's not inconsistent with surrounding uses. I'm not advocating in saying that you have to approve it, because you don't. But whatever you believe to be in the best interests of the public health, safety, morals, and general welfare is the standard that should be guiding your discussion and your vote. If you do agree or decide to make a motion to approve it, Chris is drawing to my attention that although the agenda doesn't exactly say it, there is an ordinance or a draft ordinance in the packet. So, whatever motion is made, I would ask that you move to approve the ordinance, to approve the zoning and the ordinance that's in the packet. That's if you want to do that. Again, plan development is not the right, I mean, it's their property, it's their application. We can't tell them that they have to do a negotiation process. And most importantly, we can't impose, we can't use the PD process to impose special conditions on their application that we aren't imposing on other properties in the town. That'd be singling them out for, but I understand what you're saying, it's just that...
It's just like, the land, no matter what, is owned by one person at some point before it's developed. So, you know, whether it's the developer, you know, on Pepperport Lane, that was owned by one person at some point, and then they divided it up and put those custom homes on there, and then sold them off. You know, that is a development. And I don't know what the process, I know that's kind of a special case because it was technically flower-mound and all sorts of stuff. I don't know how that worked out, but that's, it became a public road, and that, so that one was clean, you know, like, it was done well. This one is not clean. I just want it to be thought of, at least.
It's not your standard commercial subdivision. It's a residential subdivision, a private residential subdivision, where, well, it's unity of ownership, and, you know, the expectation is that you're going to keep it in the family. I mean, they may, they...
They might rent it out at some point.
Yeah, people that are saying that they have the ability to sell off these lots in the future are absolutely correct. They have the authority to do that. It's their property, they can sell it if they want to. Our goal here, though, in the process, is to make sure that, at least from a city or a town operational and administrative perspective, our needs are met. You know, we have access for first responders, there are utility easements in there, there are provisions that are made for those access easements. And so, the drainage and the other issues will come out, will come to light in the construction application process.
That'll be done behind closed doors, though. Like, it won't involve even the council on that.
No, it's operational, exactly.
Yeah, it's operational, yeah.
Exactly. I don't know if you want to be involved in that process, though, I mean...
But I'd like, I mean, I wish I could see, like, whatever was submitted, I...
You can see that if you want. I mean, it's available at Town Hall.
I didn't realize.
Right. It's not proprietary about the drainage plans or anything else.
All the permits, all the permits, everything that has been sent in from Mr. Frisby is here in the Town Hall. Mr. Weaver, could you please come back up? As it relates to this, this item, in terms of the rezoning, the Planning and Zoning Commission, what was their decision?
Their recommendation to the town council was that four lots would be ranch estates, and that would be compatible with the surrounding community. So, they disagreed with the application and recommended putting aside the single family, because there aren't any of those in that area. The remaining lot would be Ag 2, which would be compatible with the property to its north. That was the commission's recommendation to you, the council. Again, I'm not trying to be your town attorney, but to help you understand, this is not on a shot clock, okay? Correct, Mr. Berman?
Absolutely.
Okay. So, I just want the council to understand, we've all had to learn a lot more as part of this process. So, I just want to make sure that we all understand that this one is legislative, the other one was ministerial, this one is not on a shot clock, this one, this one is not on a shot clock, the other one is on a shot clock.
And the planning and zoning, what was their, what was the outcome from the planning and zoning on this item?
So, recommended to you approval of the application as modified, which is 1 Ag 2, the large seven or so acre lot to the north, and that the remaining lots all be ranch estates. That was their recommendation to the council.
Okay. So, now, thank you, Mr. Weaver.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Cody, could you come back up? So, Cody, has Mr. Frisby complied with the recommendation from the planning and zoning in terms of the change that they requested from the town?
Yes. Those are the changes we made.
Okay. Thank you. So, so, counsel, any further debate?
Can you clarify which is ranch estates and which is Ag 2? Because this says...
Let me, let me do that. The ordinance that is in the packet is exactly what the P&amp;Z had recommended. The P&amp;Z's recommendation and the draft ordinance would rezone lots 1, 2, 3, and 5 as ranch estates, and it would rezone Lot 4 as Ag 2.
Thank you, Mr. Berman.
Yeah, I apologize. I used numbers, I was doing quantity of not the specific number, my fault.
I thought that the engineer had said the seven acre lot was the Ag 2, and that's not correct.
No, that is not correct. Right. So, counsel, any further discussion or debate? Is there a motion?
So, first, on, you mentioned that there had to be some ordinance attached to number 16. What would that ordinance be?
Yeah, if the motion were, if one were inclined to approve the zoning, you would make a motion to approve the rezoning request and to adopt the ordinance that's in the packet, that authorizes the rezoning. That begins at page 44 of the packet.
And what was that last?
Page 44 of the packet, it said page 44 of the packet.
To authorize the rezoning of the packet.
Okay.
So, counsel, is there a motion? Here's the ordinance.
Okay. All right. So, I move to approve the ordinance to rezone. I guess that would be on page 44 of the packet, right? The, a 15.004 plus or minus acre tract, abstract 1334 Simmons C. White survey, or more commonly known as 250 Simmons Road, from Ag 1 Agricultural District 2 to Ag 2 Agricultural District, RE Ranch Estates District, and Single, and Single Family District as shown on...
Yeah, no, the single family...
Here, I'll ask them for clarification, let them get the motion out and see if it's seconded.
I was just reading it off of here.
Right.
That has to be taken off?
Yeah, the single family, correct.
Okay. Take that one off. As shown in the plat, what would this one be identified as? I guess just identified as the plat provided.
I'm sorry? Zoning exhibit.
Yeah, there's a zoning exhibit. I'm not sure where it is in the packet. No, I'm sorry, here it is.
Yeah.
There's a zoning concept on page 43. So, the motion would be to approve the rezoning request, that would rezone lots 1, 2, 3, and 5 as ranch estates, and then Lot 4 is Ag 2.
Okay. Want me to redo that?
Please.
All right. I vote to approve the zoning plat, Zone 1 as ranch estates, Zone 2 as ranch estates, 3 as ranch estates, 4 as Ag 2, and 5 as ranch estates on, commonly known as Simmons, 250 Simmons Road, and adopt the ordinance on page 44 of the packet.
Perfect.
Is there a second, counsel?
I second.
All right. We have a motion by Deputy Mayor Protam Dietrich, a second by councilperson Gortney. Lynn, can you please call the vote?
Dr. K?
Nay.
Mr. Dietrich?
Aye.
Ms. Willen?
Aye.
Mr. Gortney?
Aye.
Ms. Robertson?
Aye.
All right. The ordinance rezone passes. We're now going to move on to item 17. Review and discuss the proposal, fiscal year 2025, 2026 budget. Presentation by Chris Logginauer. If you want to set up the meeting...
Mr. Mayor, can I ask for a quick bio break, please?
All right. So, it is 8:58. We're going to take a five minute, can we do five minutes?
Just five minutes, I just need...
All right, 8:58. Please come back at 9:03.
Thank you.
Please come back at nine oh-three.
Thank you.[103.32]
New guy you're talking to?
Yes.
Yeah, so what this does is it sets a known path of steps versus what we had before, which was a vague kinda, you're gonna get promotion, we don't know when or what it'll be or how much.
Right. What we have now is at least theoretically merit-based. A step plan is merit-based as well. If, if, if you don't perform satisfactorily, you're not gonna be here next year to get your next step, right? So look at it as a, as a pass/fail merit plan.
Good?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. Chris?
Yeah, so, so, uh...
Can I have you go a little bit closer to the mic?
Oh, sure. No problem. So, uh, so as I said, we've incorporated all the, the items of discussion from Saturday. Uh, there were still a couple items that I wanted to address with the council. Uh, we didn't get around to talking about liability insurance. We have a handout that in, in, uh, that, that was added to your, uh, tonight. That kind of gives a breakdown of our workers' comp, uh, property insurance, auto insurance, all that. All these numbers are provided by, by TML. TML is our, is our insurance company. These numbers are given to us. I just wanted to make sure that you guys had the breakdown. Overall, it's about a 10% increase over last year. Um, some are higher, some are lower, depending on, on the things, but as, as a whole, it's about a 10% increase. I just wanted to have you guys just see the, the detail as it relates to auto insurance, property insurance, and workers' comp insurance.
Is the new revised number already in your front page summary?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and the insurance then on the liability for things like the town hall and the Double Oak Volunteer Fire Department, that, we are, we are at adequately protected levels.
Yes, we are. For example, when we replaced the, the roof in the fire department, I mean, I think our deductible was like a thousand dollars or something. It was a, it was a, it was a really good deal.
So we're basically at replacement value on these things? Is that our insurance?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanna make sure of that, 'cause I know sometimes people don't get replacement value and then they get...
No, we, we, we had...
Lower.
We, it covers, it basically at replacement value, and TML was great to work with, even, for example, with the roof repair there, there was like zero issues. They worked with us, cut us a check real quick, and it, uh, we got all our money back.
And I know at one time we were underfunded or underinsured on our contents as well. Are we now fully insured or replacement value of our contents?
We are all caught up with, with all of that. And also, we also just recently added a cyber insurance, um, as well. If we were to get hit with some type of, um, cyber issue, we have insurance with that as well.
Okay.
So... Uh, the other thing that I wanted to talk about just really quick is, uh, it is, it's kind of the forgotten stepchild in governmental budgets, but that's what's called special revenue funds. Um, we actually have technically three special revenue funds with the majority of this money we get from our traffic tickets, where a certain portion of the traffic ticket has to go in specific funds that can only be used for a specific purpose. Uh, the first one is the child safety fund. Uh, we currently have a, I'm estimating a balance, uh, year-end balance of nineteen hundred dollars. We typically get the lower five thousand dollars in, uh, in revenue each year for that. On the expenditure side, that's what we use to pay for the crossing guard out there. Um, and so that's the child safety fund. We also have a couple other funds which we've recently learned that we can combine into one, but historically, they've been, that the state finally told us we can combine these, these two into one, but for this year, they are broken out, so for presentation purposes, I'm doing it that way. What is our court technology fund, of which we currently have eleven thousand dollars kind of saved up? We usually bring in about three thousand a year, so estimating, but to bring in about fourteen thousand dollars, well, fourteen thousand dollars in that fund by the end of the year. Uh, and we can use that, um, should we so decide to. One of the things that Lynn and I are talking about is perhaps using the, the ongoing, uh, maintenance costs for our court software.
Correct.
And charge a portion of that to this.
Yes.
Uh, that's something I would bring back to council to see. We just wanna get a better handle on it, but that would take pressure off of the operating fund and start to use some of these special revenue funds, um, to offset some of those purposes, if they're, if it's a qualified expenditure. The, the final one is the court security fund. Again, we have, we're, I'm looking at us having about a balance of thirty-five thousand dollars in that one. It just keeps growing and growing and growing, and we never use it. So that's a, that's a good thing. Yes.
So this was one of my questions. The doors over here do not function properly? Our two, um, doors to the outside, and we've been talking about replacing those for like ever since I've been on council, and they're still not replaced? I think that's a court security problem. Could we allocate funds from this to that?
On all those, these types of things, I'd, I like to double and triple-check to make sure that it's...
I know we used it for these doors.
Oh, I, I'm not saying that, that you didn't, but I'm not gonna commit right now without...
That's what they said we did.
Without, if we possibly can.
But if we can.
We will. For example, I've been working with Dan in order to get our accreditation.
Oh, yeah.
We have to have certain, um, security measures for this building. One of the reasons that I have tried not to spend any money out of this because that's one of the first things Dan talked to me about when he got here. So I plan on using that chunk of money to assist us in buying those infrastructure safety-type improvements, be it a camera system, be it a door improvement.
That would be good.
If it qualifies out of this fund, so we're not utilizing our general fund for those types of purposes. And I'm anticipating by the end of the year, we'll have about thirty-five thousand dollars for that. So I just wanted to take a little bit of time just to, quick education, so you guys kind of get a sense of what other pots of money we have out there that we can possibly use for, um, for those types of purchases. So any questions on the special revenue funds? Um, the other reason I'm kind of highlighting this, and I kind of broke out, in the past, we've never really broken out the revenues and expenditures. Reason I'm doing this is because when we get our new financial system, we're going into what's called a true fund accounting software, where everything will be fund-driven. So we'll have an expenditure account and a revenue account for each fund that we have. So I'm trying to set up this budget to match when we do move over to our Tyler financial system. So it'll be a nice, easy, smooth transition for what's called governmental fund accounting. So that's why, in the past, you might not have seen it this way, uh, but there's a reason, there's a method to my madness here. So any questions on liability insurance or special revenue funds?
No, but I'm, now I'm curious. When, where are we at on Tyler, like getting that set up, like in the way it needs to?
Good question. We have had a number of recent meetings with them. We have given them our data, so they, on the back end, they are on their data conversion process of taking the QuickBooks data, and we have cleaned it all up, given it to Tyler. Now they're doing their massaging with it. That'll probably take another month or two to happen. In the meantime, what we are doing and working with them on is developing a whole new chart of accounts. Basically, it's a whole new account, how your account numbers are gonna be set up within each department, fund, all that. So then, it'll, if we do this right, it'll give us the ability to really generate some good reports. If we wanna know what our total, um, let's say, employee benefits is, or all of our FICA for everybody, we just type in the, the FICA account, it'll cover all departments. We wanna know just our, whatever it is. So every department will have like object codes, which will allow us to either to sort by fund type, department type, activity type, object code type, and we'll be able to run as many reports as we can, not only on the expenditure side, but on the revenue side as well. So that's what we're working through right now to get that fund structure and the chart of accounts set up, so then we can provide you the type of reports that you need, uh, or that you ask for, we'll be easily able to provide it. So that's kind of what's going on behind the scenes right now.
I thank y'all for that, 'cause it has been, that's the way, the place where I work runs it, so that I can look across all HR, and anybody in our organization can look all across HR. We can look all across everything. How much office supplies do we spend in every little department?
Exactly.
Things like that, so that we can cost control better. So thank you for setting it up.
Oh, you're welcome. It's a, everybody I talk to has always told me, uh, converting from one financial system to another, as Janet probably well knows, it's fun, and this is even more fun, because we're going from a QuickBooks environment, which is not a fund accounting software, into a fund accounting software. So there's a lot of backwork that has to happen to make that transition go smooth. So...
Better to fix your processes first.
Exactly. Exactly. And that's, and the nice part, that it's forcing us also to identify our, to fix our internal processes as well. So it's a lot of work, but we're, we're having fun doing it. So I can't wait till it's completely done. Right now, we are probably looking at either the, it'll probably be completed. They're saying the end of the year. I'm pushing them on that, pushing them pretty hard. Uh, so I'm hoping either November is kind of my goal, so we'll see, see what we can do with that. But thank you for asking that. So that kind of leads to my, uh, the year-end projection, because what the last thing I wanna kind of talk about is our fund balance. And, um, right now, we opened the year with a beginning fund balance of a little over 2.5 million. I'm estimating, again, and these are just preliminary estimates based upon as things are going, um, we're gonna overspend our budget a little bit based by thirty-one thousand dollars. A lot of that is because we, council approved roughly three hundred thousand dollars of things that were in the fund balance that we transferred out of the fund balance and made expenditures. So, uh, we're gonna be, from a fund balance perspective, we're gonna go down, it's actually going down less than I thought it was gonna be, because we did move that three hundred thousand dollars over. So I'm, I'm estimating a, a year-end fund balance of about two, uh, two billion four eighty-three, um, which takes me to, if you look at the, if you go to your binder, if you look at the very, 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 very last page just about of your binder, um, the town, and most towns do this, typically have a resolution, uh, establishing their fund balance policies. And this is where historically we have, uh, identified, um, fund balances that we want to identify and set aside. Um, and so what I will be doing, this is just kind of a preamble to what, so when you get it next council meeting, you'll kind of see. I'll be making a recommendation based upon the input that I've received so far from council and the needs of items that we wanna commit to within our fund balance, kind of that middle section there. If there's anything that you guys would like to identify, please let me know. It's been pretty standard in this city that we identify, uh, money for roads, money for the, we have money in there for the Dinty County Bond Project, that's for King's Road, drainage, um, computer purchases and those types of things. And if there's anything else that we wanna put in, um, we'll have that discussion as, as council. The thing that I really wanted to talk about is the last paragraph of this proposed resolution. Uh, the last resolution that town made a, uh, agreed to maintain a yearly assigned and unassigned fund balance of the general fund of anywhere from fifty-five percent to seventy-five percent. Um, that is, in my estimation, in my experience, that is extremely high to put, to put as a, as a, what I determined a, an aside fund balance, or basically a reserve, that's kind of what I call it. Typically, most towns or cities will have a reserve of either three to four months of your operational cost, is what you need to put in reserve. Um, this, in my opinion, kind of ties your hands if you need it, 'cause it means that you can't use it. So I'm gonna be coming in with the recommendation to kind of lower that threshold and identify more in the, um, committed fund balance of things that we want to identify. Just it, as long as I get you're okay to, a few nods are saying, yeah, so I take that as, as good. If you don't want me to do that, we don't have to do it. Totally council's call what they wanna do.
And what percentage might that be? I know you...
Oh, I would probably estimate about thirty percent. That's pretty standard for cities.
And, you know, our, our books haven't been good for so long. So now that we can kind of get that software going, and we have a more consistent, systemized way to do this, then, you know, once we fix some roads too, maybe we can use some of that money for that. And the town kind of feels like it's, I, I feel like we're a little behind on roads and things like, so we can catch up.
The town has been very, very, uh, safe, I should say, in building up its fund balance. I mean, that's good and it's bad. Uh, it's bad because we have infrastructure needs that we could've used that money for infrastructure needs, but at the same time, you need to set money aside for a rainy day. There's, there's definitely, but the good thing is, as a town, you have almost one-hundred percent fund balance to cover you for the whole year. I mean, that's almost unheard of. The towns don't do that. I, at least the towns that I know.
And we've been questioned on this in the last two audits.
What happens though? What, what's the problem, I guess? Like, what, I, I, where do we get in trouble?
We're, we're overfunded.
Yeah.
And we're not spending the money where tax dollars...
Right. You're not spending the money over a long period of time. Obviously, this year we have, but over a long period of time, you haven't spent the money.
And people expect their tax dollars to be going to good use, not just right, collecting interest in the bank account.
Exactly.
Correct.
And that's what it's been doing, collecting interest.
And it's not being spent for the people who live here now.
Oh.
It's maybe future generations it'll be used on, but not the people here now, not the needs here now.
Yeah.
So we have that same thing.
Yeah.
What we have to look at where I work is, it has to go back to be used for the people here now, because you're collecting it from the people here now.
Yeah. There's just so many projects that are up in the air, that it's like, oh, like I wish we could ever get to that point where we feel caught up, right? Or all the proj, they're never gonna be done.
You're never, you're never gonna get caught up.
Yeah, exactly.
But, uh, the good thing is, is that we do have that strong fund balance. Uh, and as a town, that relies almost primarily on property tax. I would say it's good to have a strong fund balance. I mean, 'cause it's not like we can increase our revenue sources significantly over the years. So you wanna maintain that solid base. But I think we can redo, I think we can keep that at a good level, but start identifying a little bit more on the committed side, and get a little bit, perhaps maybe get a little bit more aggressive with our training, our drainage expenditures and things of that sort.
Okay.
So that's kind of my overall budget presentation. What I do is I plan on pulling this all together, uh, put together a proposed budget that we'll post online. Um, so it'll be available for all residents to view, uh, for two weeks. That is a, a state law, it's a requirement that, for open transparency to everybody. It will include, what gets posted tomorrow will not just be the budget, but there's some property tax information that we're required by law to do, and some other things. So my goal is to be, once we get kind of the core budget, my goal is to be very, very transparent with what we are doing by providing it up as much detail as I can on the website for the residents to take a look at, come in in the public hearing, and ask questions. And that's, to me, that's what it's all about.
So there's no, gonna be no detail tonight? That's gonna come in the next couple meetings, correct?
I'm sorry. All the detail is...
I mean, not details from you, so let me rephrase my question.
No, all the details are basic.
We're not gonna go li, in a couple line items, and look at a couple line items tonight. We're doing that in the future.
That is up to whatever you guys, that is up to your guys' discussion. I provided the, the overview, along with the detailed, uh, the detail that's needed. If you wanna bring something up now, or...
Yeah, just go, your homework is to go read all the detail, and if there's any questions, or you disagree with any of the detail, bring it up, but otherwise, we're not gonna discuss it.
We're not gonna do it tonight.
We're not gonna do any of the line-by-lines.
That's right. We will eventually do some.
No, 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 only if you bring it up.
We're not gonna be going line item.
Oh, no, only if we bring it up.
Only if you bring it up.
If you have questions about a specific line item, or about specific backup that we have provided, 'cause we have provided a whole lot of backup for you guys, that, as it relates to salaries, as it relates to benefits, as it relates to all of our contracts, insurance, all the things that I could possibly think if I tried to provide that backup for you. If there are questions on that, I'd be happy to answer them.
I have one request. Um, I know, like, we're, we're still in, in the black on the, keeping the tax rate the same.
Yes.
Is there a view without much pain where we could reduce it by any amount?
We wanna be lower than Bartonville.
That twenty, so that twenty-eight thousand, what would that look like if we put that back toward no, we're not, no...
That would, I would have to calculate the, it, it would reduce it very little, quite honestly.
Well, it's, we're only up fifty-seven thousand over it, so twenty-eight's half of that.
Again, that is based on your current tax rate, so yes, your current tax rate. If you wanted to throw that twenty-eight thousand dollars to reduce...
Yeah, we're talking about. Tell us what that would do if we took the twenty-eight thousand and put it back.
Be happy to do that.
That would be great.
Later.
Yeah, later, not today, but yeah.
Next time.
Not gonna put you on the spot with the math.
Chris, let's make a, let's make a calculator and do a little what-if scenario.
Yeah, no, we will all...
Go ahead and take the initiative to plug in. No new revenue, the, the tax rate we're at here, and somewhere in between.
Yep.
If we threw that twenty-eight toward it, what would that look like? 'Cause I'm with her. Now Bartonville does have special taxes, because they have so much more...
They also have very...
Revenue.
They also have a lot more property taxes than we have.
So first and foremost, they have multiple components in their property tax. They pay way more than we do in, oh, total overall property tax in Bartonville with their, um, with the S, the...
ESD?
ESD, and all that. So the, the only one that's actually lower than us, and it drives me crazy, because they, they don't really hide it, is Westlake. Westlake comes in lower than us, except they have a mud that's buried down in another line item.
That's where they're getting their taxes.
And that, so when you add it together, so it always looks like they're up there, where we don't have those extra taxes. Um, so when I go to the mayor's meetings, and property tax always comes up, I always make a comment to Westlake that they think they're lower, but they're not. And the way it rolls out is the way that they do the, so you can take that grid, and you can sort it multiple ways. And if you do it the right sort on it, Double Oak does go to the town.
The only reason that I was challenging that is, we're not in the interest of making money. We want to...
Correct.
Make sure we're using the tax...
But we still have drainage, roads.
And I would even say ordinance review in there, too.
Well, the ordinance, the ordinance review is gonna require a lot of extra funds for our attorney. So we've gotta make sure...
We discussed a company doing it, too. Yeah. And then we discussed a company actually going through all of our ordinances.
And that is correct. I've made a recommendation to Chris to find a company that can, can go in and evaluate. He's getting quotes on that. Um, citizens, what that is, is it basically, it's, it's, Copper Canyon just did it. They went through, they had a company come in and look at all their ordinances, and said, you're good, you're bad, this isn't right, this is wrong. You know, obviously, they wanna charge to fix it as well. Um, we'll have to cross that bridge, but there could be a charge to do that. But if we wanna move along on fixing some ordinances, um, depending upon if the quote is affordable, um, that would be one way to do it. And I know that Janet is working with Chris on that, so... So we, we hear you loud and clear on the ordinances, folks. It's, it's hot, and we need to do something about it.
So I am gonna ask you one other question, 'cause you said you added those ones that I had asked about. So...
Yes, ma'am.
My ask about them was not necessarily to go up on them, 'cause I don't want to be gouging our residents.
We, we looked...
But I wanna make sure that we're covering the town's cost and not subsidizing people's additions, or whatever they're doing.
We looked at those two.
Okay.
And based upon our analysis, we did bump them up a little bit.
Okay.
To be, to cover our costs, and also to be consistent with our neighbors.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Chris?
Nope.
All right. Chris, Laura, Lynn, thank you. So council, as we move to the end of the meeting here, I'm going to give you each three minutes. You may use it if you want. You don't have to use it, to address anything. Um, what I'm gonna ask you is, we're gonna do a decorum. We're not gonna, we, like we ask of our citizens, to make sure we stay professional and positive. I believe you will. Um, so Janet, you'll be first up.
I, I don't have anything else to say.
Okay. No, that's fine. You don't have to speak.
I mentioned the ordinances earlier when we started, so no, I'm good.
Okay.
I also just wanna thank, um, you know, everyone who was polite and professional in this whole process. And, you know, we're all not gonna agree, and that's okay. But, you know, we all come from different backgrounds, and, um, and I, I like that. You know, we, we have different strengths, and, um, no hard feelings when things don't go, you know, we all agree in things like that. But that's just, uh, and I hope the citizens can see that, too, and, and be professional when, you know, speaking with us. And I promise I'll look, I, I have looked at all my emails. I promise I'll actually start writing back. But it was a lot of emails. So if, I'm sorry, you know, when you don't get them responded quickly, um, it's not easy to do. But yeah, anyway, that's all.
All right. Um, Mike?
I will take my three minutes. So, Bill Maher was accused on a show coming, that he was coming around to being a Trump supporter. His comment was, "I'm not coming around. There's just the truth." I wish in Double Oak there was just that truth. A former mayor, a former councilperson, people who ran against us on the council, and a friend who oversaw a Facebook page, and other activists were not about what's true. There are many lies against the mayor and the council, against Mr. Schreiber, against Mr. Frisbee, and, and lies about the property. It was mentioned in a previous town council meeting that people have not been respectful, inferring that the council has not been respectful. That's, that politics got into the town. There was always been politics in this town. It was good old boy politics. It was also mentioned at the council meeting, if we could just get back to being the citizens and neighbors and respectful to everyone, we would make our own town the quiet little town that it used to be. That last sentence alone implies the town has not been respectful. I haven't seen on social media a single councilperson or mayor being disrespectful of citizens or making accusations. I have experienced and heard citizens calling family or council members and asking how they're gonna, the councilperson is going to vote, a form of intimidation. Council members have been concerned about what citizens would do, so much so that the police offered to drive by council members' homes more often so that they can feel safe. This town cannot be the quiet little town when citizens accuse a new property owner whom they've never met of being a narcissist, when citizens verbally accost a person in the front of town hall because he speaks kindly of the property owner, and when citizens are mean and ugly and, to the builder who is just doing his job, and he's a good guy. This town will never be the quiet little town that it's used to be, when people spend their money and their time spreading lies about the mayor, the town council, the town administrator, a property owner, a builder, and anybody else who disagrees with them. It's called intimidation, bullying, or just good old boy politics. You want to see it your way, and only your way, so you did. You had to vilify Mr. Schreiber to, so that you could tell a story, not the story. A gossip story saying that we were, saying that we were uninformed and bad people. Many of you said you knew how we were going to vote. You didn't, because none of us have said how we were going to vote on the SUP. We knew it had to be, go through a process, and many of you vilified the mayor and the council, and many of you don't know us and haven't even tried to get to know us. I vow, when I ran, I would represent the will of the citizens. The permit was pulled by the owner, so it's not voted on tonight. However, make no mistake, the council member, as a council member, I heard you loud and clear, and I would've followed what the will of citizens would've been after we went through the process to get to the information. And when it comes to ordinances, there's a committee made up of citizens, but it's a process, and it's not fast. If ordinances you want such, were such a big deal, why haven't former mayors, former council members suggested the ordinance?
Thank you, Mike. Mark?
I just wanna thank everybody for helping, following the process, uh, your comments, your feedback, the emails. Um, I check my emails once a week. It's usually just before the meeting, so, uh, I don't have a whole lot of time to reply. A lot busy with real work, and that, that this isn't real work, but it doesn't pay. Uh, so, a lot of, appreciate that, appreciate everybody's input on this, and, um, that's the way it's supposed to work. You know, every, the, um, the people have the right to make a request for their property, and that's, um, their right to do that, and to go through due process, and everybody has their right to comment on it. And if you like it, or you don't, or whatever, they still have the right to do it, right? We can't stop that, um, unless there's an ordinance that says, um, it has to go through the proper process. And a lot of people are saying that, um, it should've been known to everybody sooner. Well, until they make a request, or put in the, the paperwork to do it, it's just a discussion, right? They're asking for input from the city, and that's what the city does. That's why they're here, so that they can get input. You know, the, the mayor and the council, well, we didn't really could do that, that's not us, but, uh, Chris, and, uh, the lawyers, and Lynn, and everybody are here to help them with the process of turning in the correct paperwork. And, and that isn't something that gets discussed, 'cause that's nothing final. Right? It has to be final, finalized, and actually something on paper to work towards. And once that's turned in... And once that's turned in, hey, great, off we go. So, and we go from there. But, thank you, everybody, for helping with this process, for the town administration, doing a lot of work that they had to do, to make sure all this is followed, and everybody else involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Pat?
Yes, I too would like to thank the residents for coming out. I got an unprecedented amount of emails. Also, I tried to reply to every single one of them that I could, I had a few here at the end, that I did not get to, because of work also, being extremely long hours lately. I'd like to thank the P and Z Commission. I knew, and this is why I said, trust your neighbors, I knew that the people on that commission were detail-oriented. That Donna Gillum found what she found did not shock me, because Donna Gillum is a super detail-oriented person. So I trusted them to do their job, and to find what they needed to find, and to make the decisions that they made. So I'd like to thank them for those. I do also want to talk about some of the things that went on here as well. So I know people felt threatened by this whole S U P, and I know that they made decisions based upon that, rather than thinking through some of their decisions. I know the people are good people, that live in Double Oak. But I'd like to call your attention to calling WFAA, because that exposed the town to a lot of crazy people outside of our town. That exposed our town to have somebody who actually committed a felony by impersonating our town, and saying that the meeting was called off, and put that out on there. That is actually a felony under the Texas Online Impersonation Penal Law. It covers, it comes with it, 10 years maximum in prison, and $10,000 fine. I hope that nobody in Double Oak did that. I really do, I don't believe somebody would here. I hope that's true, that they didn't do that. I'd like to also tell you that because of this, your town council was being threatened, or felt threatened. Maybe not by people in this, actually, some of it was by people in this town, but most of it was not. It was outside people, people outside, because you invited in, by putting us on the news, it invited in people from all over DFW area, that liked to interfere, liked to hack. We had texts coming to our phones, we don't know who they were from. But hopefully, you have been informed not to ever click on any links that you get, that you don't know who they are, because that can infect your phone, and cause you to have problems later, than identity theft and all. So I hope no citizens are caught up in that, if they clicked on anything. So, but that's what it brings to our town, when you go outside of the town, instead of just keeping it here, and talking here, and talking locally. Thank you.
My relatives actually in Kansas called me and said, "What's going on down there?" From Kansas.
Yeah.
So, all right, thank you, Pat. So, I just want to take a minute and say thank you. These land use and zoning discussions are not always simple, and they can bring out a lot of strong feelings. What I've seen over and over is real commitment from everyone here, residents, our volunteers, and our council, our commission members, to do the things the right way. To our citizens, thank you for showing up, getting involved, and sharing your thoughts. Our ordinances and our processes are designed to give everyone a fair and open path to be heard, and you've helped make that possible by respecting the process and sticking with it. To our Planning and Zoning Commission, our town council and our staff, especially, our staff, Lynn and, and Chris, were under a lot of undue pressure, or very much a lot of pressure to do things. I know how much time you spend reviewing applications, studying details, and listening. You do this work because you care about our town, not because it is easy, and it shows. The way you carry yourselves and respect the process makes Double Oak stronger. Nothing could be said better than, than what the Planning and Zoning Commission did, and the way Andrew conducted the meetings. And finally, I want to recognize the importance of keeping our meetings civil. The rules of decorum aren't just formalities, they're reminders that every voice matters, and that we can have tough conversations while still treating each other with respect. At the end of the day, that's what makes Double Oak special. We work through the hard issues together, guided by our ordinances, our process, and mutual respect. For that, I am grateful for each and every one of you. This meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.